First thing I'd like to do is introduce our newest board member, Commissioner Barry Breeden. He sits on the, as you all know, sits on the county commission. He's the newest member now of the Board of Health. So we want to welcome him for coming this evening. Okay, we're going to start with the public comment. We're going to limit it to 45 minutes total. Three minutes, we have a time period, three minutes per individual. I know that we have about, I think, 12 to 13 people signed up to speak. And we want to give them their due, so we're going to limit it to that. And, um, just going to start? I want to remind you all that you cannot talk about individual personnel or personnel issues, per se, under the regulations of public comments. Those things have to be done in closed session. So just recall that, and if you start to do that, we'll remind you. So we go ahead and call the first person. Uh, Dr. Villier?
I wrote this down so I wouldn't drop under tangent, so. Good evening. I urge you not to support the proposal to move the Health Department under the full control of the Board of Commissioners, making the Board of Health an advisory only. This change removes trained health professionals and engaged community members from meaningful decision-making and gives full authority to elected officials, most of whom do not have a background in public health. It introduces the risk of political influence in areas that should remain guided by science and professional expertise. Public health decisions, especially during emergencies, need to be made quickly and based on the best available evidence and not shaped by public opinion, election cycles, or external pressures. When public health becomes entangled in politics, it can create a confusion, delay important actions, and reduce public confidence in health guidance. This can be especially concerning in situations like disease outbreaks, vaccine efforts, and public health emergencies, when timely, consistent communication is essential. Our current Board of Health includes a broad range of perspectives: doctors, nurses, pharmacists, dentists, veterinarians, engineers, and engaged citizens. These members bring valuable experience and community insight. Reducing their role to advisory status could limit both professional input and local representation. More than 20 counties have made this similar move that's being proposed, but there's no clear evidence that it's had a positive health impact. Without a demonstrated benefit, this shift brings more potential risks than advantages. I respectfully urge you to maintain the current structure and keep expert professional leadership at the decision-making table. Public health decisions are best made by those with the training and experience to protect community well-being. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, the next person that signed up is Jennifer Germaine.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Germaine, and I'm the Community Health Promotions Coordinator at Macon County Public Health. Much of my work is grounded in equity, inclusion, and the well-being of underserved communities, the very principles that are at risk in the Commissioner's proposal. I strongly oppose the Commissioner's plan to take control of our Board of Health. Public health thrives on trust. It depends on the careful collaboration of experts who understand how systemic issues like poverty, race, and geographic isolation impact health outcomes. The current Board of Health includes medical professionals who help shape policies that reflect this complexity, reducing their authority with silence crucial voices and compromise the integrity of our mission. As someone whose role centers on community engagement and health equity, I've seen firsthand how important it is to have a department that responds to people's needs without political interference. Our programs serve individuals who often feel forgotten: seniors, low-income families, and minority populations. Their health cannot be protected by politics alone. It requires insight, compassion, and professional guidance. The work we do in Macon County directly supports the 10 essential public health services: a nationally recognized framework that is used to guide, assess, and improve public health efforts. These services include monitoring health status, educating the public, mobilizing community partnerships, developing sound policies, and ensuring access to care. My job and the work of many colleagues relies on understanding the social determinants of health. These are conditions in which people are born, grow, live, work, and age. These determinants include housing, education, food security, transportation, and access to health care, all shaped by systemic forces beyond an individual's control. Undermining the Board of Health jeopardizes our ability to respond effectively to these challenges. Decisions rooted in short-term political interest cannot replace a strategic, evidence-based public health system that prioritizes equity, prevention, and long-term wellness. I urge you to not move forward with your proposal. Let's preserve the independence and integrity of our Board of Health and keep public health rooted in professionalism, equity, and service.
Next up is Jessica Jones.
I don't come before the Board to complain and be called in to settle employee, but to seek change. I've been a nurse at the Health Department for the past 14 years. I love my patients and my job here at the county. My passion as a nurse is in helping patients that may not otherwise receive care. I'm currently the prenatal child health immunization program and foreign shovel nurse, along with other duties due to staffing shortage. The last seven months, we've only had two nurses instead of the five positions allotted. I'm not here to say anything negative about our health director as a person, but I feel things need to change in style, in leadership style. To say that she doesn't care about her job in the county would be untrue. To say that she is present and accountable to what's actually going on would be a lie, and that's the start of my complaint. This isn't about pay period. This is about, um, our clinical supervisor not being present.
We're going to, I'm going to have to interrupt you. We need to stick with non-personalities.
First, there is not an exit interview process for employees that are leaving. It's leave the badge when you go, and then the pay is automatically declined. If that were part of the process, there are multiple people, including nurses, that have left for reasons including poor supervision and toxic workplace. Second, numerous complaints have been made by not only myself, but other employees to the Board of Health. As I've been told by members of your board, this has been a common complaint by many others within this department as well as in the community. I was then told to file a complaint with the Commissioners and the County Manager. This process is broken. Employees have nowhere to go when there's an issue. I've never seen a Board of Health member in the building besides their initial tour until this week. Thank you, Ms. Patrick, for coming yesterday. We were told by our direct supervisor, for many, for a long time, we weren't allowed to speak to the Board of Health without approval ahead of time. It never encouraged to attend meetings. I'm not saying the Board of Commissioners needs to take over, but there needs to be more of a checks and balances system in Board of Health and the members that care about employees and patients. I feel like at this point, Board of Health is acting more of an advisory board than dealing with the personnel issues that have been brought up. I know there are new Board of Health members, and I'm encouraged by that for potential change. I am tired of the toxicity, poor management, and it has time for a change. From what we've, the nurses have been told multiple times when there's an issue at hand to deal with it. Deal with it on top of full schedules, charting, and additional programs being added to the only two nurses. No wonder we can't keep an employee for more than a couple of months. Every person that has left was left on their own due to poor management. We have a new nurse starting in August, and without change, I'm worried we will not keep her for long. I've never spoken up in the past for fear of retaliation. If that is what it takes for change, then I'm willing to do that for my patients and other employees. In the last week, there have been discussions, meetings, and promises of change, but I feel that would never have happened without the Commissioners stepping in. I'm grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is James Walter.
So the rest of mine, I'll probably have to turn in to police station, then I'll go through what I have here. Hey, everyone, my name is Jamie Walter. There's nothing better than someone speaking out loud. I am the clinical disease nurse for Macon County Public Health. I've been in this position for almost seven years. Working in the Health Department has provided me the opportunity to help the people in this community, and this is something that truly makes me happy. Being a Franklin native, I've grown up watching many people in this community struggle for having means to achieve appropriate health care. Being a part of an organization which allows me to help providing services to those who might otherwise not receive the means of great building. I enjoy working with my patients and other staff. My message to them is not one of anger, but rather of discouragement, disappointment, and concern. I have no ill will toward anyone in leadership, and I am thankful for the help which they have provided to me during my time. However, everyone has room for improvement, and there are various concerns which have arisen in regards to leadership at the Health Department. Our current nurse staff consists of two audience: fully staffed and employee, we should employ five. We lost two nurses in the spring of 2024 and another in January of 2025. Since then, it has been chest of mine. We have an amazing clinic staff who have pulled together in this difficult time to provide the best quality of care we possibly can to our patients. Bringing out concerns I have of various leadership is not an easy thing for me to do. I'm usually not the type to complain. Anybody that knows me knows I like to chug around, but it's not something I like to do, but sometimes you have to. However, concerns do exist, and it is important that they are brought to light so they can be addressed. So as far as the process of going to the Board of Health, I'm going to be honest with you. I, in one of our meetings that we had with leadership, they told us if we went to the Board of Health, it had to be told to them. Automatically with that, I got the fear of retaliation. Like, how can I go to them? How can I present a problem if I'm going to get repercussions for that role? I do have to say, the Board of Health is full of intelligent medical professionals, and I know that they have the ability to fix this problem. I'm going to be honest with you, the first person that came to me about this was Mr. Breeden, and asked me about my problems. The Board of Health hadn't done that at all, except for this, which I appreciate. So I would like to turn the rest of this in. I do have--
You can bring it up here if you want, we'll make sure--
I did have the exception to end this out on. On another note, I would like to address some of the accusations and comments made by individuals who work in this building regarding the nursing staff, since complaints have surfaced. I have seen messages about the nursing staff in the last week alluding to the fact that the nursing staff here does not really care about the quality of care we provide to our patients. This is truly disappointing. Implying that the only reason we're making this complaint is to try to get more money is a statement that is insulting to me. If money was all I cared about, I'd kill a variety of different places and make significantly more. Money is not our motivating factor. We care about our patients. I've been here for seven years. Working various disease outbreaks, making home business and check on patients, standing out in rain, snow, and summer sun by COVID testing, and receiving calls in various hours from out of my work time. I had to stay over at work knowing I would not receive any extra pay for it. I had asked, I would ask those who were making disparaging remarks and try to understand how it feels and try to figure out set in our position. How do you think it feels to be extremely short-staffed, providing the highest level of care to every patient, and have people making negative remarks about you, but they don't understand your situation at all? Let's focus on working together to make the process in the Health Department better and not trying to tear each other down.
Okay, next is Peyton Bartel.
I have come before you today as an employee of Macon County Health Department. My name is Peyton Bartel, and my position is a medical office assistant in the clinic. Ever since I can remember, I feel like I've been called to work in the healthcare field to help people and truly make a difference in our community. I take pride in my work and my reputation. I care deeply about patient care and the health and wellbeing of all of my colleagues. From the day I joined this team, mostly everyone has treated me with kindness and respect. The bond and morale between most of us is amazing, and that's what brings me here today. I would like to respectfully bring to your attention some ongoing concerns I have regarding the context and leadership. These concerns are not rooted in personal conflict, misunderstandings, or ill intentions, but out of concern regarding repeated patterns of behavior that have and continue to affect our morale, ability to communicate, and ultimately the quality of care we are providing to the public. Specifically, I have experienced and observed for far too long the following behaviors I find unsuitable for any person's workplace. These include, and are not limited to, personal petty remarks, passive aggressiveness, non-communication, and blatant disregard of staff when qualified decisions and opinions do not align with this particular leadership's opinions and instances. Not only does this behavior create a toxic work environment, it actively discourages people from speaking up, sharing ideas, or raising concerns for fear of retaliation or being dismissed. Personally, I have spoken up about my situations by voicing concerns to both of my immediate supervisors. However, the bare minimum actions we're taking to remedy the issues, and nothing changed. If anything, things got worse. Our clinical staff were under significant pressure, but with mutual respect and clear communication, it's imperative maintaining a healthy and productive work environment. When those in leadership positions resort to subtle forms of demeaning and undermining employees with their silent treatments, condescending remarks, and dismissiveness, it erodes trust and fosters division, which ultimately compromises the performance and the ability of the entire team. I want to be clear, my goal is not to disparage anyone, but to stand up and advocate for myself, my colleagues, and the people in the community to have a healthier, more supportive Health Department for everyone. I hope this matter will be taken seriously, looked at thoroughly, and handled appropriately. We need leadership that shows respect, kindness, empathy, accountability, compassion, and openness, which goes along with our field. We all collectively deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next Madison Johnson.
Okay, I'm real nervous. So I wrote this originally because I was just going to turn it in, but they talked me into reading, so here I am. So I'm Madison, I'm one of the lab techs here at the Health Department, and I'm here to express concern about the current workplace environment here at Macon County Public Health. Overtime has become increasingly difficult to remain motivated due to lack of consistent and effective leadership. This is not a complaint about pay or individual grievances, or issues stem from absence of professionalism, structure, and support, all of which are significantly affecting both morale and productivity. There's little to no accountability, inconsistent communication, and often no clear direction for management. As a result, the workplace feels disorganized, unmotivating, and at times emotionally draining. This atmosphere has become stressful and discouraging for many employees who are simply trying to do their jobs well. Ongoing issues include frequent discommunication or no communication about important decisions or changes, unequal enforcement of policies and expectations, unprofessional behavior, and poor follow-through on concerns raised by staff. These issues have contributed to unusually high employee turnover, which is a clear indicator that something within the organizational or leadership structure is not functioning as it should. Many experienced and capable employees have already left, and others are actively seeking opportunities elsewhere. This isn't primarily due to pay, but rather because of ongoing issues with lack of leadership and communication. Employee turnover has also led to the hiring of underqualified or inadequately trained staff being placed in critical roles. New employees are often not given the tools or support they need to succeed, which places an unfair burden on existing team members who must pick up the slack. This creates additional stress and contributes to an increasingly toxic and unsustainable work environment. One of the most concerning patterns is the lack of professionalism demonstrated by some individuals in leadership positions. Instances of employees being yelled at, argued with, or confronted in front of others, including patients, have occurred multiple times. Such behavior erodes trust, damages morale, and should never be tolerated in the workplace. It's difficult to maintain respect for leadership when professionalism and basic courtesy are not upheld. There is also inconsistency in how procedures and disciplinary actions are handled. When protocols are not followed or applied fairly, it further undermines the credibility of those in charge and leaves staff feeling unsupported and divided. I chose to work in healthcare because I've always been driven by a desire of making a meaningful difference in people's lives. The opportunity to contribute to others' well-being, whether directly or behind the scenes, gives me a sense of purpose and fulfillment that few other feel to offer. I'm drawn to the compassion, precision, and teamwork that healthcare demands, and I take pride in being part of something larger than myself. Unfortunately, working in a toxic environment where negativity, lack of support, or poor communication are persistent has taken a toll on my motivation. It becomes increasingly difficult to maintain enthusiasm and focus in the workplace culture that undermines collaboration, professionalism, and respect. This experience has highlighted just how important strong leadership, accountability, and a supportive environment are to both individual performance and overall morale. Thank you for taking the time to consider these concerns. My hope is that by bringing these issues to light, positive change can begin to take place for the well-being of both employees and the community we serve.
Thank you for your comments. Madison Johnson? Mercy Adia?
My name is Garcia Adira, and I'm here to express the same concerns that my coworkers have said. I've been here for a long time, and recently-- I've been here a long time, but I did take a break to, for a little bit, and I came back because I love this place to work. I love my patients, I love the coworkers at my, I work in the clinic area, I work, I've been there for all this time, this long time. I don't want to repeat what they just said because I think you clearly, clearly heard them, and I want to make sure that change needs to be done. And I want to recall what he said, that we were not given the opportunity to come in front of the board members ever. Every time that we said that we need to go somewhere, they, we were told that, no, we have to make an appointment, in order for you to make an appointment, you have to come to this, this, and stuff, and stuff. And at the end, it was like we were just stuck in the same place. I appreciate you came over yesterday. I didn't talk directly to you, but I saw you, and you were there. And we need to see more than that. For the Board of Members to be part of the Board Members, we need to see your faces in the clinic. We need for you, I understand you all professional, you all have your business or where you work, but I would like to see you to come to the clinic and see what we do and what we have to go through, especially now being only two nurses instead of five nurses. Some days, it shouldn't be this way, but some days, there's only one nurse running three schedules. And sometimes one patient can be easy and just questions don't, but sometimes the patient needs more than they're here for, and only one nurse to do all of that, I feel is too much and it shouldn't, and sometimes, we are all professionals in the clinic, but sometimes we are tired. We, we just get tired, and we need somebody to back up or we can go and talk and be able to, to say what we need to say, somebody to back us up. So I hope this brings a change. I really hope. I agree with Mr. Villar's statement. I don't want things to change critical, but I do need something to be changed. And if you guys, you all present here can do that, we will appreciate it. We really appreciate it, all of us, not just the place, all of us. Because thank you for your time, and I'm going to sit back.
Bonnie Morgan is up next.
I'll start off by saying that I really appreciate all of you guys sharing experiences that they gave a lot of insight on, and where this complaint came from, and some concern that I actually hear from you guys, and where it is. With that being said, I'm Bonnie, and I work for Macon County Health Department. I just want to express my concern about the county commissioner potentially taking control from the Board of Health and what that can mean for the future of this agency. While some complaints definitely need attention, I worry about the shifting of the Board is a drastic change and how that could damage the long-term integrity of the Health Department. The Board of Health becoming purely an advisor for work is the future risk gets future relevance, and especially if their input starts to be even more than we expected, which is my biggest concern. I do think there's value in the Board of Health, and I worry that they will lose their value over time if you guys gain control. This potential permanent power of shift is very rushed and poorly communicated. There are programs here that are crowding WIC is one of them. Undermining the department, excuse me, as a whole has impaired credibility for our future recruitment and has weakened the public's trust in our department, especially since the decision appears politically motivated in some ways due to lack of communication. Commissioners may lack the time and expertise to manage the daily operations here, and I believe should instead work with the Board of Health members to address these concerns through the proper channels such as our liaisons when they are needed. A SWIC staff supports accountability and improvement, but personally should be committed professionally with respect to the existing structures that are already in place. And now that we know where the issues are, I think we can go from there to really better those structures that are in place. And if these complaints are truly the big concern, which I see that they are, I think it's important to allow the current leaders, the current leaders are reasonable about time to correct the situation before we consider shifting responsibilities. Many of us are concerned that there may have been underlying motives behind this proposal, given the, how the situation has unfolded. I respectfully urge you and the Board of Commissioners to provide a measure of transparency so that we can better address the situation and these complaints regardless of individuals' views of the current Health Department and their leadership. If the Commissioners truly had no power over what we do here at the Health Department, I don't think that we would be here today. I think that in this situation, a little effort and communication can go a long way, and I feel like that was the obvious way to handle time and circumstances like this. Instead, unfortunately, I feel like time and energy has been wasted and that we could have addressed this more privately, but I understand now, but thanks for that. I think it's important to mention I personally love my job at WIC. We have great morale, communication, and job performance. I may speak, I may not speak for every employee at the Health Department, but anyway, we feel respected, valued by our leadership, and we have no issues with the Board of Health at this time or some of the leadership. I appreciate you all giving me time to make this happen.
Nancy Roman?
Thank you, thank you. My name's Nancy Roman. I work at the WIC department. I have the privilege of working with a group of strong, compassionate women who show up every day with one goal: to help families and the community. I can confidently say that our morale in the WIC department is strong. We support one another, we communicate openly, and we treat each other with mutual respect. While I understand there have been concerns raised and mistakes have occurred, I haven't been told what those are. I find it troubling that there is a push for the county to take over without transparency or clear communication in this matter. So today, I'm asking the county commissioners, let's work together, let's support the leadership that's already in place and committed to doing better. Let's fix the problem, rebuild trust, and keep moving forward for the state of public health and the community we all care about. I was just going to say I love my clinic colleagues, and I appreciate you guys. You guys are hard worker. I love you all.
Amy Niflock?
As a citizen of Macon County, I am opposed to this change in our public health system. Public health is a cornerstone in the foundation of strong and thriving communities. It is vital that qualified healthcare professionals lead the way in the decision-making for the health of our county and its citizens. I find it odd that we are geared to an administrative issue that can easily be solved with effective administrative policies not only being in place, but followed by those who are past who supported-- who are past who supported these employees. It is clear that either those policies and procedures do not exist, are being ignored, or the people ignoring them aren't being held accountable by the Board of Health, whenever they report to. I have worked in public health, have a passion for public health systems, and have been an HR director for a large Medicare company. It is clear the ball has been dropped on multiple levels because there is a severe lack of communication and action between the people in charge and the people these employees depend on. I will ask both boards, as well as the Health Director and Human Resource Director, are there standard operating procedures for employee complaints? And if there are, why are those ignored? Is there a public employee handbook for all public health workers, including the Board of Health, that states those SOPs and the process employees can depend on should they have an issue, including retaliation policies? Does the Board of Health have a separate SOP in place in the case that the complaint is against the Health Director or HR? And are those sensitive complaints considered confidential? Excuse me. Having these in place is vital so that employees can have confidence in those that manage them and can hold their employer to those standards when things happen. If those are in place, the real question is, why are those who obviously didn't follow them not being held accountable? You say that you feel that the Board of Health should be advisory-only, yet you felt multiple opportunities to incorporate them into the conversation regarding these issues. So how can we as citizens be confident that if you took over and they were advisory-only, that you would even consult them? Excuse me. You asked the Board of Health members more times that they had a plan to deal with employee issues, which leads me to believe policies and procedures to protect employees are, again, they're not in place or they are being ignored altogether. Respectfully, if you consider the conversations regarding employees' morale or complaints as both a waste of oxygen, then you shouldn't be involved in the decisions that affect their workplace. And if you aren't, as we've told, public health administrators accountable for their lack of action, or their failure to follow the departmental procedures, and what is typically a simple administrative task, then what else are they not being held accountable for? I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your comments. Ann Hyder?
Yes, thank you. I'm Ann Hyder, and I'm here to support, behave the governments of the Public Health Department as it is now. Having worked with Macon County Public Health for over 31 years and served as the Assistant Health Director for many years, I've worked, obviously, with many Board of Health members and with many commissioners. Per the statute that defines the makeup of the Board of Health, Board of Health members are appointed by the commissioners, so there is a relationship there. Also, of the 11 members on the Board of Health, there is a commissioner liaison. So with that said, I am just here to say I support keeping things in the structure that it is now. Thank you.
Saline.
Saline, I'm sorry, Saline.
I'm a private citizen, and I'm glad to be here tonight. I've worked in public health for 30 years, been member in Macon County. I've worked in South Carolina, in Georgia, and all over the rural South. And I am here to thank the Board of Health members for your time and for your expertise and for your volunteer work just to govern this organization, and I was right for that because of you. Public health work is essential. It's critical to people, to WIC population, so many populations that absolutely depend on public health work. And I believe that the professionals that are on this Board of Health are the right group to govern this, and with their good intentions, their skills, and their hard work, I think these things can be resolved. I think the county commissioners and the government and the administrative staff of our county have a gracious plenty on their plate, and that the Board of Health is the right group to resolve these issues. And these very painful comments have been heard, and I appreciate all the work that all of you do. So, thank you very much for this time.
That's the last person that signed up to speak, and if there are no others, then we will call the public comment section over.
If I find any problems, Michael McKee?
I'm sorry, it's not.
Sign to my step side.
Yeah. This is my page.
Do you have to sign in all ways?
Yeah, you must...you probably signed the...just the sign-in thing. Please go ahead.
Oh, forgive me. So, I've been enjoying the county for 23 years. It's a wonderful place and I have a lot of friends and associates, and I just want to recommend a couple things. One is, there's some really smart people in this county. And I think it's inappropriate to move towards a different structure until these smart people have had a chance to diagnose all the issues, understand what the priorities are, do a full evaluation, and produce a plan of action that will help this organization continue to grow and thrive and continue to do great work. There is no more...there is not another department in this county that's as important as this one. And I think it's important that this leadership take an active role in diagnosing this, putting a plan together. I was able to watch the meeting the other day. I wasn't there, and I think that communication is the key, as it was brought up in that meeting by the commissioners and by the staff, to diagnose what the issues are. I think there's been a lack of communication, probably for a variety of reasons, but this isn't rocket science. So let's find a way to document this information, put a course of action together to review it objectively, and then work on solving this before we move to put a lot of energy and effort into building a whole new structure. And I can tell you, when you roll out a whole new structure, the amount of work to put that in place effectively is going to trump what you're going to have to deal with here. So, I really feel strongly that if that effort needs to take place, then people in this room and the commissioners can get that done and get it done effectively. And I think you have to be transparent about it, because everyone in this room has value, and they need to be able to understand what's taking place, and everybody needs to be able to promote their agenda constructively. So, with that, I enjoy living here. I would help in any way that I can, but let's work on solving the problem before we go out and try to create a whole new structure. Thank you.
Michael McKee, okay. And we actually found another person who signed up on another sheet, so John Barry?
Yeah, there you go. Come on. I've been living here about 10 years. I've been all over the country, and I've had...I've worked in a lot of businesses, a lot of roles, and one of the biggest mistakes I see in an organization when it's having trouble is to not do the work of looking at what are the problems, why are the problems? What's in place? If someone talks about standard operating procedures, do they exist? Do they exist to deal with problems like this? Because if they don't, then it's madhouse. And moving that...moving the management or the overseeing up to another group altogether to your work is going to cause not just havoc in that move, but you're not going to change anything, and you've got to change your behavior. You've got to know how to run this thing. I don't want to sound like I want to run it like a business, because healthcare is not a business that we should be concerned about. What we should be concerned about is, what can we do as a group of people in an organized way, in a way that supports each other, to get the problem fixed? Let's not give it to somebody else to fix it, because they're not going to fix it. You've got some very, very fundamental infrastructural problems that exist, and that needs to get fixed. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have a person that wanted to speak? If not, then we will call the public comment section over. Let me ask the Board of Health members, would any of you like to say anything in response to all of the various things that we've heard?
I'd like to say, without getting into specifics, that I recognize for many people that it's hard to stand up in public and say your piece. We've heard different things, and that's the way this should work. I applaud each one of you who not only stood up and spoke, but also showed up to listen. That's what a democracy is. I appreciate this process. I've heard everything everyone has said, and I'm careful not to speak on behalf of the group here, but I'm sure everyone here appreciates your courage in standing up and stating what's important to you, so I thank you.
Any other more, John?
Yeah, anybody else want to...Dr. you want to... Sure, yeah. Okay, go ahead, I'll speak at. You call us, yeah. I'd like to echo. My name's Mike Corbin. I serve as the dentist on the board and currently the vice chair under Jerry. I do want to repeat what Dr. Vargas said. I'm very thankful for the comments tonight and the willingness to speak publicly. I know it's not easy. I know in the last probably month and a half or so, since Commissioner Breeden mentioned maybe going into closed session with the Board of Health, some of us have been contacted with some concerns. Prior to that, it can be difficult, because as we heard tonight, there may have been some instructions not to contact the Board of Health, and we hear that, and we understand that. I do want to mention a couple things on that, that we meet every other month, and that happened before, I think, maybe all of us or definitely the majority of us got on this board. Historically, the Board of Health met every month, and several years ago, that change was made to be every other month, which may be something that we need to discuss changing back. You know, I think part of that miscommunication or lack of communication could be that we're here meeting only six times a year. Was it Mercy? Is that your name? I loved your comments. You were so genuine, I could hear just the passion in your voice and how much you care about what you do. And all of you, I appreciate the comments we heard. I know that Garrett and I have been on this board a little over a year, and most of the people on this board have been here a matter of months. And Garrett and I took a tour, and I want you to know, that was something that we took the initiative to set up. It was not required of us. We chose to do that, but I did love your charge to this board to visit more. I appreciated that. And again, I think some of that lack of communication may have been driven by the fact that there may have been some instruction not to contact the Board of Health. I do want to mention that in our previous two meetings, which again have been over a month and change ago and then two months prior to that, as we started to maybe hear some isolated concerns, we had talked about making to where we can be contacted. If you go to the website, our names are listed, and our jobs and our titles. Our phone numbers aren't on there, our emails aren't on there. We had discussed about making a change to that. Garrett and Jerry and Mr. Steve Grissom served on a subcommittee to look at changing that, and we simply haven't had the meeting. It's coming up the 29th, is that right?
Yes.
Right, and so I do want to express the fact that that's something that we have recognized maybe a need to change anyways. But lastly, I want to thank the commissioners for bringing this stuff to light, because, you know, again, with maybe some isolated concerns that we would hear, it...I see how things might have naturally gravitated there, and so I appreciate the bringing these things more to light so that we can see it. And the comments tonight, too, that was...that was very good. I think that's...oh, I have.
Since I've been on the Board of Commissioners, we've had numerous calls, not only through the Health Department, other agencies in Macon County, and through reviewing these complaints and everything. That's one reason why I'm on the Board of Health, is some of the other commissioners have had these complaints for years, and they asked me, said, Chairman said, John, would you serve on the Board of Health? And I said, I will serve wherever you want me to be. And so, I was asked at the last joint meeting, why I haven't brought any of these concerns to the Board of Health. I didn't realize that my fellow commissioners were also getting inundated by these complaints. So, when Commissioner Breeden said, I'd like to have a joint meeting, I was called after that and said, what's going on? I had no idea, honestly. I had no idea why we were going to have a joint meeting. And then a few days later, I had a conversation with Commissioner Breeden, and he started telling me the same things I already knew. So then, at that time, I knew we got a problem. And I will tell every one of you, it makes no difference what side of the aisle you're on, it makes no difference what politics you put. Nobody should be in fear of going to their superiors with a legitimate problem. And if you do, and you're retaliating, then there should be immediate response to that. I've heard it, I've heard it by former retired Health Department people talking about this ongoing issue. It's not something that I said or have dreamed up. It's you guys that work here every day, that have to live it. There's no reason in the world why you would go home crying to your family because of the day that you had. It's wrong in more ways than one. So, I've also been told by there have been several employees go to HR of the Health Department, and either nothing be done, been done about it, or it's been swept under the rug, or it's been retaliations. There have been some great employees at this agency that's been terminated. Very qualified people have been terminated because they went against superiors. So, it's there. We brought it up, the Board of Health, at this joint meeting. We haven't heard any of this. No, because you were told, do not go to the Board of Health. I was also told that I shouldn't be contacted by people in the community or employees, and I said, absolutely not. My cellphone is well-published. You got a problem, by all means, I don't care, call me at 3 o'clock in the morning. I'm here to represent every citizen of Macon County, whether it's employee citizens or whatever the case may be. So, in my mind, the true way to correct the fears of county employers, Health Department employers, and fears of going to HR, we got to change. We have to change this problem because it's not working. And in my mind, it is for the county manager and the HR of Macon County to deal with all of your concerns and everybody. I'm an elected official by the people. I have voted for several of these people sitting up here that's on this board. They were appointed by the elected body. Great group of professionals. I know nothing about medical and all this other stuff, and I applaud these people for coming in and volunteering their time to serve on this board. And I really think that this board should be an advisory board to the county commissioners and the staff who are coming to the county manager's direction and the HR, and in that way, you will never be told, don't go to your superiors for a problem.
How does that solve the problem?
So, that was just where I thought if we could get it corrected through leadership of the Health Department, there has to be a drastic change. And here is the...okay, when there's a problem, you go to the head of the snake, okay? And I am so thankful that employees have come forward within... And I am so thankful that employees have come forward with this, and it's not like we're on a goose chase out here and we're dreaming up this stuff. But the Board of Health cannot oversee this agency meeting one time for two hours every two months. I've been serving on this as a liaison. We come in, they do a great job, we do, we talk about things and everything. We're not addressing issues. We're just talking about what we're doing as far as an agency for this group of people or whatever. You can't, you cannot honestly control what's going on in this agency two hours every two months. And so there is no oversight in this agency. Hey, that's what we're talking about.
What you're talking about...
Oh, no. I can't get into any details about that stuff. That's my stance. I was elected by the people to do what I think is right. There's a problem, we must address it, and that's what we're here for. It has not been talked about until recently, and guess what? The cat's out of the bag now. We're going to deal with it, and whatever that looks like is how we're going to deal with it.
So define deal.
Whatever it takes to make this agency right here.
Rather than having a debate between the you all and the Commissioners, let's, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate all of you coming to tell us things, some of the things we've never heard, some of the things that we, well, most of the stuff that we need to hear. The board is committed to solving problems when we know what they are, committed to doing it through the right channels, which are established in the policies of the Health Board, which are dictated to some extent by the state. And, but mostly, we appreciate you taking the time to come and tell us issues that are important to you.
So I ask, there will be, there will be a response from the board and the Board of Health related to process going forward?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying that there's great information been shared here today, and I'm assuming there's going to be a bunch of action items coming out.
Oh, sure. No, we're going to go through and validate to see if the people in the chief of command even heard the stuff, or if they heard it and they didn't do something, why they didn't. You know, it's not going to just be pushed aside on with the way we've done things in the past.
I just think there's a lot of good information today.
Absolutely.
That there could be a process here to help move this forward and get to the bottom of it.
The process right now is the Health Board dealing with the management of the health conspiracy.
Appreciate the opportunity.
I just want to speak to that. Thank you for your question. I mean, the first step is for us to be here to hear this, right? And then, on our agenda, we've got an opportunity to go into closed session, and then our regularly scheduled meeting coming up is July 29th. And so I think, again, the first step is to hear it, but yes, I think this board wants to fundamentally change. We just had to hear these concerns to do that. But thank you.
One more.
Yeah, my name is Tina, and I'm the Health Information Manager here at the Health Department. But I don't, I think what a lot of you guys don't understand, don't realize is, we are so understaffed, and my job alone, because I have degrees, I could maybe I could afford $7.00 an hour. I pulled it up and showed my supervisor yesterday. But I love this place, okay? I love this place. I'm a single mom, but there's a lot of these people that they don't have enough help, so they do everything they possibly can do during the time that they can do it, okay? Like, I've seen quite a few of them that's doing jobs of four, five people, okay? Highly understaffed and not getting paid.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment is over there. Again, thank you all for coming and letting you express your concerns and interests. Thank you for that, too. Let's see. Okay. We need to approve the agenda. I have one. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, yeah, it was enter tape. Enter tape motion, somebody on the Board of Health to go into closed session and discuss personnel issues and per the North Carolina Statute 143-318, Subsection 6. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? Do all of us in favor of going into closed session? Say aye. Aye. Thank you for the vote.